Welcome, everyone, to the Dobbs Ferry regular meeting for Tuesday, February 25, 2020. Do I have a motion to open the meeting? Trustee now, second trustee Patino. All in favor? Meeting's open. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So the first item on the agenda is the public hearing. It's the continuation of a public hearing to consider the application of 115 Broadway, St. Cabrini, to add a new parking lot on their property. So who's here to? Okay, we'll wait a few minutes. So let's do have the appointments. I'm going to appoint Yaya Rosenkranz as Chair of the AHRB. He's currently a member of the AHRB, which he's going to replace trustee Patino as Chair of the AHRB. And I'm also appointing Dale Greenwald as first alternate member of the AHRB, each for a term of three years. That doesn't require a vote. That's just my appointments. Right, Shaleen? Right. Okay.
It's a statutory board.
It's a statutory board. You may have a motion.
You need a motion?
Do we need a motion?
Do I need a motion?
Yes, it's a statutory board.
It's a statutory board appointed?
Yes.
Doesn't it mean?
Actually, he's already on the board, so I'm just appointing him as Chair.
No.
But Dale.
But Dale, I'm appointing as the first alternate.
To the?
AHRB.
AHRB is in the vote.
Yes, it's a statutory. Okay, so is there a motion to appoint Dale Greenwald as alternate member of the AHRB? Trustee Patino, is there a second? Trustee Cassell. All in favor? So that so be it. Dale is now the first alternate member. Are we ready? Come on up. So I think you were going to do some type of a 3D demonstration for us?
Exactly right.
Perfect, so let's see that.
Great, so while Ralph sets up, thank you for the opportunity for pushing us back on the agenda. Again, for the record, Taylor Palmer with County Theater, joined by Ralph Perrishy, our draft and co. We are joined by our president, Wes Chester, as well. As the mayor mentioned, we are going to be presenting some visuals, metaphor that were requested at the last meeting. If I may, a brief background while Ralph sets that up. We are before you for our continued review of the site plan. The application has been referred over to the planning board for comment. Additionally, we have received comments from the Westchester County Planning Board on referral. We are basing it as state road, so the application is referred over to county pursuant to general municipal law 239. Those comments are received 24th. So Ralph will address those specific comments, specific to stormwater, parking, which is already provided for on our property, and as well as any correspondence with the DOT. For those in the public this evening, the applicant was previously supported on the 14th, January 14, when the public hearing was officially opened for the matter. And again, we're here on the 28th. For those that were unable to appear at the last site visit, there's also a site visit that premises on 27 to go through our proposed off-street parking design. At the last meeting, the board did specifically request that we prepare some type of a visual simulation, 3D modeling. So at this point, without further ado, I will have Ralph please go through, presented to the board and those in the public, a design that shows the site set down in the hill. You're all familiar with the location of those parking area. And it will also show some aerial photos of what it looks like, although many of us won't be flying over the building. We do have cool Google Earth components. So with that, thank you.
Can you make it the whole screen?
I'm sorry.
Can you make the picture the whole screen so you don't have that background? Can you maximize it?
I am not familiar with this picture.
Okay, great, thank you.
I apologize, but not apologize, but we've done some pictures and videos of the 3D rendering, but if you want to see any images beyond that, I'll have to load my hook my computer up to your monitor in order to do that because it's a specific program called locating reverse. That's how we created these models. So this is looking from the parking, the lower parking lot towards Broadway. You can see that, as we had mentioned previously, the parking lot itself and the tops of cars are sitting below the level of Broadway here. This is okay, I'm going to stretch it out again. Okay, there we go. This is looking from kind of like an aerial view looking from St. Christopher's towards the site.
And those trees would remain?
This tree is the existing marsh tree. This one, these smaller ones are the landscaping from the landscape plan. As you mentioned previously, wanted to add some shrubs in this area here. That's what at our sidewalk, which you mentioned a lot, because they have some shrubs there. We've done that. I also have the landscaping plan that shows that. I wasn't able to submit it, but we could we have added that on the landscape.
Can you? I'm sorry, Ted, but this, I think, is the right picture to ask the question. What's the drop from the sidewalk to the highest level of the actual parking surface?
About nine feet. It's going from 114 on the roadway to approximately 106 at the parking surface.
Guess that's eight feet. But and then the initial height of the shrubs that are between the sidewalk?
All right, so we can go back there. That's the these shrubs here. The initial height would be approximately three feet. They mature somewhere between five to seven. So eventually, they will mature. Their mature height will be within the fence line. And this is looking from driveway down towards St. Christopher's and the Broadway on the left here.
And those trees in the back to the left?
These are the existing trees along the property line that we said we were retaining at this point.
We're going to try to retain.
Our design, that their size and scale are approximately what's out there right now. You know, they're not the exact same species, but the height of them and the scale of their leaf, the spread on those leaves is approximately what's out there now. Same thing with the existing marsh sycamore tree. Again, not our model. We don't have certain trees available. We use what we can based on the models. Trying to get this to run video. Okay, here we let me try putting that little thing for you. All right, I'm going to have to run the video separate. This is a video. This is a video image of this model as you're driving northbound on Broadway. This is what you would see from the driver's line perspective. Speed of which this driver is going is only about five to seven miles an hour. So obviously, you know, the driver. Now, this is switching to the southbound perspective. As you can see, we added the shrubs in this area.
Can you do that again? Can you play that again?
Sure. We have several versions, but I'll play this. I have one from your perspective with somebody walking on Broadway and one that kind of does a flyover of the center. And these are all based on the model This is one looking from an aerial perspective, and then we kind of rotated and spun around And here you can see we're, oh, sorry about that. And here you see that shrub, that line of shrubs again to soften that view from the driveway coming in and a line of shrubs behind the system fence line. Play next.
Yeah.
So this is a walking view as somebody's walking down. And again, this is from a perspective of high height, somebody walking, kind of looking towards the building, walking northbound, and then we'll flip it and it will flip and go southbound. And as you can see from the walking perspective, you can see the river in the background, but there is a lot of trees towards the back of the property, which, you know, you'd be looking through those trees. If you'd like to see different perspectives, I'd have to make up my computer. So it's up to you.
What does everybody else think? You want to see more or you're satisfied with what you're seeing? Okay.
If I'm counting correctly, and you have five spaces that they face Broadway, and then the other ones are divided in both sides?
I'm sorry.
Five parking spaces, other ones facing Broadway?
In this lot, twenty-five parking spaces.
Five other ones facing Broadway?
Facing Broadway? You're talking about these five spaces here?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And then how many on each other side? Just how are they distributed?
So you got five facing Broadway. You got seven facing to the north and eleven facing to the south. Well, seven and nine facing north towards the driveway and eleven to the south.
Thank you.
And as we mentioned before, we're replacing these four that are under the building parallel to the building. So that we can reuse those as well because we had the net loss in one space in order to.
Can you just speak up a little bit? Can you just speak up a little bit?
Oh, sorry. We had to, we added, of course, parallel spaces to the building to make up for the net loss of one, in fact, it's an accessible aisle space here, and the net loss of the three parking spaces for the emergency connections. So this is a net balance in this area.
Any other questions by the board? This is a public hearing, so certainly the public. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Justin, I wanted to show you the landscape plan, just to show you that what we had asked, the board had requested, we had placed rower shrubs in this area along the system driveway to soften that view from the driveway to the parking lot in vice versa.
Okay.
Do I have other questions, Vinnie, but not per se about the 3D?
No, just about this whole. Yeah, you can talk about anything.
Well, we, well, we are speaking in terms of the landscaping. When we did a tour, there was a few trees that they are on the property of St. Christopher. And we discussed the distance that the structure will begin and how it will protect actually.
So those trees were on, not necessarily St. Christopher, they were along the fence line. The fence line is several of St. Christopher is both their fence, so if you put it into the property. But those are these trees lying in trees right in this area here that we're saving. One of the reasons why we had rotated the parking lot within that corner to the north was to save those trees so that we weren't destructing their root structure.
And what is the distance currently for the construction?
Approximately twenty feet from those trees with curb line. That was to, again, to preserve those trees and not affect the old structures.
How many trees are there currently?
I believe there's six, but I have this in the. So there's one to the sixth place.
Okay.
So you can see that those circles on these trees where I was saying we wanted to stay out and keeping the structure out of those circles to preserve those trees. And that's the, that was the root zone that we would work on.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I had a couple of follow-ups to our conversation last time. I looked again at the parking study analysis, and it seems to me if we add the 25 spaces you're proposing, that the majority of time there's going to be like a significant excess of free and open spots, just to make sure that during a very limited period of time, that everyone has an available spot that's convenient for them.
I understand. Was there questions then?
Well, I'm trying to underst- I mean, I guess, I guess, I guess for me, it's like I'm having trouble reconciling your own calculations.
So what I had said previously was that we designed for a peak situation, and that's how we have to design because that peak situation is the turnover in the afternoon of the different shifts, there's the nursing shifts.
Right.
Because of those different shifts, the nurses need to be logged in and signed in before the next, before the nurse that's on duty.
Of course.
So that's the reason why. And then we add a safety factor. As we do in all traffic calculations, we add a reserve factor to make sure that we're accounting for any additional unforeseen circumstances. And that's typical of any traffic context that we design in apartments. So we had calculated in our analysis based on, I believe it was 15 was the actual deficit. We looked at, again, the aerial photographs that we had taken, which showed a 19 car deposition on the aerial photographs that were taken for the project. And we took those numbers and we added the safety factor to that to the overall. So that's how we came up with the 25 in our study.
I also wonder why you didn't take like, you know, the highest and the lowest and exclude them and look more at like a median number for when you had the deficit so that you wouldn't end up with 25, and maybe you end up with 15 parking spots instead of, you know, maximizing it for the one half-hour period that had a 15 deficit.
And if I may, on that question, there were also comments from the public, those that have worked at the Cabrini and those that experienced these operating times day in and day out. So part of what we're representing here, you know, again, I'm sure an applicant would love to come before this board in the future when they need parking and can provide it and say, hey, it's only during the peak when we get away with this, maybe during a regular, non-peak hour. I certainly would like to make that justification as another application. Here, we're trying to make sure this has been done. And I understand that this has already been a reduced proposal over what was originally considered to account for reserving those trees on the property. And again, existing conditions here. We're not adding any new changes to Cabrini. There's no new programming. There's no new anything. It's just existing conditions, and this is to help satisfy that need that I think the public and those that have worked at Cabrini, and again, the traffic study goes to show. So it's really a composite of all of those components and really tries to work in ensuring that there's no visual or other impacts as we showed in the 3D design. And as otherwise presented here, really is a de minimis zoning compliant parking lot. So this lot is also fully compliant with zoning, with S.A.P.S. and otherwise. So we try to make sure that this accounts for that with additional screening, preserving the trees, and ultimately making sure that we get site visits and the likes to ensure that all visual, potential visual impacts were mitigated by this proposal.
Yeah, except that I had somebody go there today between 2:30 and 3:30, which is your peak time on both days that you did the anecdotal parking survey. And there were 13 open spaces on the north side and nine open spaces on the south side and 10 illegally parked cars on the south side, leaving 12 open spaces. So I mean, I guess some of it depends on which day you're there, but it leads me into what your colleague, and I'm sorry I don't recall your name, said earlier about the shift changes in the submission. It said Cabrini was gonna, would have to look into, I don't want to, how to balance the shift changes with the state health code, because part of what I'm wondering is this does seem to be a product of shift changes. So if you could alternate shift changes or, you know, some people work six to two, others work seven to three, because I understand the overlap that you have a nursing home and the nurses can't leave before the next nurse comes in and checks it. I understand those safety considerations, but there seems like there could be a more pragmatic solution that wouldn't require a 25 parking spot lot in the front of the village abutting property to Broadway.
So we did look at the shift changes, and we did look at the staffing by hour throughout the day. And this is what was compiled by the client as they're based on their actual employee stats on those peak hours. So they do peak out with approximately 210 employees during the 12 o'clock hour. And that comes down to approximately 200, well, actually, excuse me, 231, 231 employees during that peak hour that they're starting to park in the lot for, which is for five, four o'clock period, three to four o'clock period. So yes, it does, on a daily basis, you will see variations. I don't deny that. We studied two-day period. We study a six-month period. What is that going to change the result? Probably not. You're still going to need the additional parking, whether it's a two-day period or a six-month period. And as a comparison, you know, I think I mentioned previously, when you look at a roadway design and you're at 12 o'clock in the afternoon and if you're standing at an intersection and you look around and there's five lanes and you're all empty, does that mean that they're going to stay that way? No. At 5:00 in the afternoon, you're going to find that every one of those lanes is occupied and there's backup on that intersection. So you design as traffic engineers, and we design for that peak period.
Trustee Sullivan, you brought up a great point, too. There were parts that were legally parked. Part of our submission and part of what the review has been done by Cabrini is looking at whether people were walking to work, looking at car sharing, looking at all the ways to help mitigate the proposal here. So this is not that this was looked at in a vacuum, that this was a simple need. There's been a number of ways that this has been looked at to try and help reduce other parking demands on the property. We've looked at other similar situated facilities that have, in other municipalities and the adjoining communities that have significantly larger or more required more parking, let alone providing for more parking on the site. So what we're trying to do is ensure that those illegal parking vehicles don't happen on the site. That helps the emergency first responders in the village get to the property and also ensures that the site operations work well, all the flows better together. Essentially, it helps function the whole cycle.
I agree, but there were 10 illegal parked cars today when there were 21 open spots on the lot. And Cabrini can call the police department to enforce the parking restrictions so that people learn that when you go to Cabrini, you better park in the open spots. It wasn't a product of not having spots. But I don't think my question about the balancing of shift changes so that we have less of a demand from three to four, so that maybe there's less of a need for these excess parking spots was answered. I mean, it's on page, well, they're not numbered, but it's point one on your November 18 submission. And if you don't have an answer today, that's fine, but I do think that that should be answered.
If I may, trustee Sullivan, I will have Ralph speak directly to that. But part of what this individual that went out to the site today, I don't know if they have an engineering or traffic background or parking study background, but I'm not sure how long they were there, whether these vehicles parked illegally because all the spaces were taken, which goes directly to.
No, I'm telling you, the spaces were open, but it's just, my point is it's anecdotal, and your parking study is anecdotal. But I'd rather have an answer to the other question now. Thank you.
And so I mean, what happens is that the people who are coming in are finding that they can't, they don't have a place to park, and they're parking illegally in other places. And as those people are ready to park there, of course, the secondary people that are in their spaces are ready to leave afterwards. So it's not like the employees can go back outside and move their cars to a legal spot. So that's what's happening is that overlap period, people are parked illegally, and as the shift changes, the people who are leaving their shift come out and move their cars out and move to the park spots. And that's how it's happening.
But can we also say that maybe this casual lack of parking has created habit where people don't want to walk, and rather than to actually park further on the back lot where there is spaces available, they rather park in the spot that is illegal that they already know that they get away with parking in there so that they don't have to walk far? There's so many different elements that they are substantial here. At the same time, all of your data is only based on a two-day study, which I've been analyzing it and thinking about it since you presented to us. And I do have a concern about the fact that the study was only done in two days. I, I work in the hospitality industry. My data changes by the day of the week. My parking lot is empty on a Sunday while it's completely full on a Tuesday. So there's a lot of different elements that comes into place. So I have a concern that that two-day study doesn't necessarily really give you a full overview of the information that we need.
I think what the board would like, and I'm just based upon the comments that we've heard today, is that we would like to do a more formal traffic study that's more involved in two days.
Your question is traffic study and a parking study. Are you asking for?
I think I maybe would, I think a traffic study and a parking study.
I'm independent.
Set patterns of traffic entry and exit of the site, not necessarily the parking.
I think it would be important for us to have validation of the parking study. And I think it would be important to know if there's an issue of traffic or more traffic or accommodating current traffic coming in and out so that it makes sense for us to have our own consultant review the submissions, the technical submissions.
Well, I'd like to have our traffic consultant do actually the actual study.
Yeah.
So, because I think, you know, you're asking us to, right now, it's what, 11 acres of?
We're asking for an as-of-right.
Well, I understand it's as-of-right.
Use.
Right, I understand that, but right now, it's 11 acres of grass and trees, and they're asking us to let, to have you dig it up, and with impervious service, on a, based upon a survey, that's two days, of two days of looking on a Wednesday and a Thursday. So I think to get the fuller picture of it, I think it's, would be more telling for all of us if we have a full traffic and parking study. I know that it's cost you already a lot of money for this, but I think for the benefit of the village, and the benefit for all of us, if we have that study available, I think we could make a more informed decision.
If I may, the traffic studies are typically generated, as you mentioned, when you're involved with new development, new proposals, expansion of programs, or other uses on the property. The applicant has significantly looked at other alternatives to parking, has gone through excessive analysis for what is, and oftentimes considered an exempt application for secret purposes. So we're here providing a, now a 3D model, that I expect, at least from the board, can we get a temperature that visually, this, that what was presented tonight helps further the understanding that there is no visual impact here, because we're trying to, we're trying to move the ball ahead here. I think--
Well, I don't know how you could say that there's no visual impact when you're walking down, and you see cars instead of grass. It's not about just the river view, it's about greenery, I mean, and having, you know, more green space in Dobbs Ferry.
And what if our jobs protect open spaces in Dobbs Ferry, specifically in the--
The vision plan.
It's in the vision plan.
Which is, that's why I'm targeting a lot of my concerns. They are not aligned with the vision plan of the village.
So before we make a decision, though, I think the studies would be good. I mean, are we okay with just a parking study, or do we, how do we feel? We want the whole traffic study done? What's everyone's feeling?
I just need confirmation that the demand requires 25 spots.
Seven days.
So that would be--
And that the alternatives that were proposed by the planning board--
Are considered.
And considered by Cabrini are, you know, not feasible, because they either don't provide enough parking spots, or the cost really is what Cabrini has presented the cost to be. I think it would be important for us to have independent verification of that.
Yeah, 'cause there's also an issue with the parking, because in overall, there's some alternate side of the street as well. So I think the day for the week that the studies are being done are very important as well, because there might be an instance where there may only be two days a week when you need extra spaces, and--
We would just request some clarification about what ultimately the board is looking for, because our traffic consultant has done it based on industry standards, but if there are specific days of the week that the board is looking for, that its consultant can review our report prior to providing it, so going and doing additional studies. All we're trying to find is just some guidance about what would be appropriate, and what the board is looking for, so we have--
Well, I'll tell you, if our traffic consultant, I mean, if our parking consultant looked at your parking report and said, you know what, that's adequate two-day studies, and based upon the two-day studies, I concur with your report, if our consultant said that, then I think we'd be hard pressed to say that it's not an adequate report. So if our, if our parking consultant said he would need to study a week, or whatever that is, then we, of course, we'd wanna go with what his recommendations were. So we're not the experts, but we're happy to follow what the expert says, and if the expert says two days, Thursday and Wednesday are fine to judge parking, then that will be fine. So that's what, so I think we'll do that, if, and we'll adjourn it. Plus, it has to go for the state to review, right?
Just to be clear, there's no involvement with the state with respect to the parking--
Right.
We're not changing any, we're not modifying any entranceway or exit on the state highway. The comment of the county, GMO Pearl, is not an accurate comment. There is no coordination with the county, the state DOT with respect to our parking plan.
But they had concern about the stormwater.
Yep, well--
I'll have Ralph address the stormwater, and we also, as I mentioned, there are existing bike parking spaces on the premises. I'm not sure that the county is aware of that. We can certainly make a, aware of it, but I'll have Ralph--
Charlie has something there. Charlie.
In regard to the stormwater--
Hold on just a moment, before we leave that topic, Charlie.
Go ahead, Charlie.
There's a number of issues that we, I believe, have a right to look at through our experts' lenses, and I think that's all we're asking for. And also, as to the DOT, they may not have any issues with it, but they are obligated to look at it because of the Route 9. And upon, wait, 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 wait. Upon the request of the county, I mean, the county planning board has been doing this for many years, and I think they do a pretty good job of it. If they believe that it should be sent there, I'm not saying that they've got a comment, then it should be sent there. If they have no comment on it, I'm sure they'll answer that.
We certainly don't object to requiring any documentation.
Okay.
Also, I think DOT has no jurisdictional review authority in this matter. If there's comments of the benefit of this board--
They may wanna review the stormwater--
Just jurisdictional.
Okay. So, so I have one thing that, and I apologize, is I probably should have brought this up earlier, but it seems that it's common practice, Westchester County being an example, and actually the Dobbs Ferry Riverside Pavilion, the St. John's Hospital being an example, of the use of valets to manage peak parking, so that cars can be double stacked and can be managed. And I was not at the site visit because I had a scheduling conflict, but is that something that's come up in this process, or was that part of what was studied when you evaluated parking alternatives?
Well, our client had addressed a valet service previously, and said that the cost, it was cost prohibitive to do that for that time period. You have to understand that this isn't not the proper organization. So you're talking a daily cost, you know, associated to their daily operations, which is, they would like, I don't know if you want to address it further, but that, those costs are better suited to being applied to their patients' care than towards operational costs of the valet, that's one thing. But a valet is perpetual. You're saying that the valet is gonna be there every day for the next--
Absolutely.
Ten years, a hundred years.
That could be an employee, that could be a position created, that could be a position created at Cabrini, that will be a salary, not a daily expense.
And again, we've looked at alternative parking analysis, we've looked at, there was a request that we look at off-site, other alternative sites, which is not permissive in the village. We looked at other alternatives with St. Christopher's, provided us correspondence saying, A, there's concerns about having other users of their property, let alone the unavailability that they have existing today for their site. So we've done a number of other analyses.
I saw the St. Christopher's, but what other ones are you talking about that were non-permissive uses in the village?
There was a request--
There was a request that we looked at off-site parking, and leasing parking of off-site facilities, which the zoning code is not permissive, because all parking related to a particular facility has to be on that parcel.
Well, Mercy College leases parking in the village. I don't think that's a violation of the code. I don't know, Laurie Lee, whether you--
Yeah, in this case, I'm sorry, and in this case, the, it's the village board that determines how much parking is where, and on the site or off the site. I mean, you're, you're not suggesting that they're moving an entire parking lot elsewhere, you're suggesting that for purposes of the overflow.
Overflow, yeah.
And all we asking is that you--
I'm sorry, and are you asking about valet during that peak period? Are you asking--
Yeah, just during the peak period.
Because I recall that there's a significant drop in staff on the weekends, because the staffing for the OT and the BT, they're not there seven days a week. So I do recall that Saturdays and Sundays, it might not be a problem, but your, you know, traffic consultant might be able to help you with that.
Okay, so--
I'm sorry, Marla.
No, it's okay. I just, I just really, you know, want you to understand that we are trying to understand your points of view, and everything that you have presented to us, but we continue to look for alternatives to protect that green space. There are options that I would like you to invest time and money on, in looking on the recommendations that they are being made by this board, and by other entities of the village, so that we can prove that there is other options, instead of just keep looking as though they why not, we cannot do it. All I keep hearing is, we cannot do this, we cannot do that. There hasn't been one open mind about looking into some of the alternatives that they have been presented by some of the other boards, and recommendations that we have made.
And if I may, I, we have been on referral to the planning board, so a lot of these questions and discussions and alternatives were considered and reviewed at length at those boards, and we did try to provide sort of a summarized version of that. In our, in our submission, we did include references to, again, the modifications of this parking design, so as to preserve the trees, based on questions and comments that came up during your site visit, and to make sure that what we're doing certainly tries to achieve all of those purposes. We hear you, I know the mayor requested that we look at this, and have your villagers' consultant review our parking study. I think we're amenable to that purpose, and we'll certainly be sure to continue to try and address these comments as they come forward. Again, you know, we went forward with a very, you know, expensive presentation tonight, to try and help understand visually, for those that either couldn't, the public, or for those that weren't able to conduct, or to come out to the site for a site visit. We did put that together to try and be responsive to your comments, and it's not all these comments, but those of the planning board that we've been addressing.
And I appreciate, this has been going on for almost a year for you guys, and I know, and you've done, and I appreciate the effort and time and money that you put into it, but it's a big decision, and it's, it's something that we're trying to, you know, cars in the future, down in the village, it's an issue for us. This is a public hearing, is there anyone who wants to speak about?
I did have to--
Yes, stormwater.
Sure.
Drainage comment--
Oh.
The county's not familiar with the on-site drainage system, and their comment that this is a stormwater detention area is incorrect. The runoff from this existing parking, the existing green space, enters a drain inlet, two drain inlets, one at this location and the existing drain inlet here. This stormwater drain line contributes to a very large underground stormwater infiltration system at this location here. That infiltration system is several hundred feet of large diameter corrugated perforated pipe. So the stormwater infiltrates through this, so anything that we get out of this corner goes into this system, infiltrates into the subsoil, and the pipe, the overflow pipe from the system is only for, at a high level. So the higher your storms, and the much more intense storms like the, you know, the severe down storm, down, down, yeah, down, excuse me, are the ones that we discharge through a pipe that discharges down the hill. And that pipe connects to what's called a flume that is running parallel to the Metro North tracks. Now, that flume, and that pipe were reviewed and approved by Metro North at the time of the prior construction of the system, so. So the county's not familiar with this, so their assumption was somewhat incorrect, and because of their unfamiliarity--
Can you write that up for us?
You have to send that to the county, and you have to respond to that, do you not?
I do, but I respond to the brief--
Right.
No, thank you.
Sure.
Correct assumption.
Okay.
And I think that--
Wait, wait, wait.
Clarification on what you just said. This was designed when the original structure was built, or when this most recent addition?
It's an extension.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to--
I'm not an expert, and I don't think any of us are. I think we do have our consultants who need to review this and make sure that they're comfortable with the stormwater as well. Our engineers should be seeing that. And you are replacing a permeable surface that there, with impermeable--
They made a comment that it's a stormwater management area, and that's correct. Yes, I'm not saying--
Okay.
If you go from grass to firm--
Right.
I didn't say that, but they made a comment that it's a stormwater management area, which is not--
Yeah, I just think it's another thing that our engineers should be looking at, and make sure that, that they're comfortable with it.
Just so I'm clear about what I would like, I would like our consultant to look at the alternatives that Cabrini looked at, and the explanation for limited number of spots, the inability to fix the slope, or the expense associated with doing those changes, so that we could have the proposed parking be in different areas, not at the front of the par, front of the building, so that we have an understanding as to that as well.
Okay, you got it. Go ahead, you want to talk?
Rob, 228 Judson Avenue, I'm representing the planning board, and I think it'd be great, because I think you all pretty much understand what our concerns are. We're not suggesting that there may be a legitimate issue at certain times of the day, and we're sympathetic to that challenge. And I also want to point out that we're not singling out Cabrini in any way. As you all know, Danforth, we pushed hard to have them reduce their parking ratios and provide a shuttle, which they did. Mercy College, approval of the new dormitory that's dependent on them implementing a traffic demand management plan, which they are doing. And I'm sure this will also be an issue with the pending development of Children's Village. The vision plan is both general and specific about this. On the general side, we talk about preserving open space and green space throughout the village, preserving buffers that join the neighborhoods and to Broadway, and concern for the incremental degradation, including non-point source pollution from parking lots. But the vision plan, which is sometimes gets not to be too general, is actually very, very specific here. They talk about this location as being an important gateway to the village. It is listed, there's an inventory of open space resources, and this is listed on that, because we do not make a distinction between public and private open space, because we have so much institutional open space. It is part of the village character. And actually, in the case of the institutional campus reuse guidelines, it actually says for Cabrini to maintain a well landscaped 5D footset back from Broadway. So it's actually dimensionally specific to the vision plan. And of course, to promote non-hollowed evening. The traffic committee, which does not support this application, has worked really hard on these issues with significant results. Thousands of hours of volunteer work have been done by the village committees, including the environmental commission, and the climate action plan is committed to reducing traffic in the village. This committee regularly testifies in these kinds of measures throughout the village, and for developments of every kind. Now, there are two ways to think about this, and both are implied. The first is for the additional parking to have, keep the amount of, somehow find additional parking, but do it in a way that has less impact on the environment than on the visual experience of driving to Dobbs Ferry. The second way of looking at this is to reduce the amount of car travel to Cabrini, and hence through the village, and that is a more ambitious, but more important outcome in some ways. We have made numerous visits to the site at different times of the day, including walk-throughs with, like, the building inspector and village engineer. Chairman Hunter and I have tracked utilization at different times of the day, and on most occasions, we observe open spaces in various lots. There are often open spaces on Broadway despite the alternative side of the street parking on Wednesday and Tuesday mornings, which does not overlap with the shift area. Again, I know it's not scientific, but I did exactly the same thing that your person did. I went to the site today at 3:15. There were 15 open spots on Broadway, 16 open spots on the, on the north lot, and 23 open spots on the, on the south lot. This leads us to believe that the real problems occur at certain peak moments related to shift changes, which is something Cabrini has also suggested is the case. This suggests that this is not so much a matter of space as it is a matter of management. We're not suggesting a single silver bullet solution, rather, we believe that there's a menu of strategies accumulatively can relieve this problem. As to the first approach about providing parking in other locations on and off-site, we think that there is an opportunity to exploit a few places where the lot can be expanded or reconfigured, including a handful of spots that can be built at the west edge of the site, although we don't agree with them about how many sites should be created there. There are spaces underneath their port cochere, despite the cost to sprinkle that area, which is why those spaces have not been used. We think there are other opportunities to tighten up some of the sprinkling and circulation, and to encourage staff to use a significant amount of off-street parking along Broadway. But because the idea is to reduce the total amount of driving in the village, there's a menu of so-called traffic demand management measures that should be tested over time. Among these, prioritizing spaces for car pools and van pools, pre-tax transit payroll benefits, indoor direct financial incentives to ride E-line bus in Metro North, and other TBN techniques. Mercy has a program to pay people who will commit to carpool, like a $100 or $200 a semester, depending on how many people they get in those cars, and they have a guaranteed ride home program. To conclude, we're sympathetic to Cabrini's situation, but we think that placing additional parking in the proposed location runs counter to many of the other state goals in the village, including several specific provisions related to this property in the vision plan. And we would like to be satisfied that all the other mitigating strategies have been employed for long enough time to see if they can be effective before paving more in that location. To that, I just want to say, on this parking study that you're contemplating, which I support, it is not about going out and counting spaces. Any of us can do that. It is doing what we did at Mercy College, where we had a planner, who also was a traffic, had a traffic engineer in house, come up with a comprehensive plan, where they could suggest what the impact is likely to be over time, with these other incentives. So I just want you to encourage, if you're thinking about this traffic study, think for a parking study. Think about it as a planning study, and to have somebody who can talk about what the likely impact is going to be of these range or other traffic demand management techniques.
Thanks, Rob. Thank you, Rob.
Rob, can you give us a copy of that?
I'm sorry?
A copy of your statement?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else would like to speak? Changed your mind? No, just about this issue for now. Okay.
Right, I had two things I forgot.
Okay.
Sorry. And this is maybe more for Laurie Lee to speak on, but I noticed in the secret application that certain things might have been left out, or not completely answered completely correctly. I don't recall, Laurie Lee, and then, you know, does it make sense here to have the long form secret application instead of the short form that they did here?
They, they did actually revise their EAF and your--
Okay.
--submission package, and I sent you, I refreshed your memory this morning by sending you out the electronic version of the original package. So there is a revised short form, and this is an unlisted action, which is neither here nor there.
Okay.
And it's always your prerogative to ask for a long form. If, if, if the reason you are looking at that is, is based upon an implication that there could be significant adverse environmental impacts, that could only be shushed out with a long form. But I see that tailor's up, so--
If I may, I don't, I don't mean to cut Laurie off, but I would mention that here, again, as an unlisted action, a short form is the appropriate form. The applicant has also submitted what would be considered supplemental EAF support, which is the traffic to the parking report, the visual analysis. All these details are really an extension thereof of the EAF. So these details, while not saying EAF, are the specific criteria that would be otherwise considered in that form as relevant to this particular application. considered in that form as relevant to this particular application. So, I've submitted those additional details that would be...
Thanks. Anything else you have?
Yes, I did, I did want to ask, does, are there any other groups or entities that use the Cabrini parking lot other than Cabrini, its employees, and its visitors?
I can ask, uh, Pat, if, yeah, be that. Well, Pat, the president asked you to...
Sorry. It's my friend that was asleep outside.
So, let me just ask, do you mean routinely or occasionally?
I guess you should answer both.
Okay. Routinely, no. Occasionally, yes.
Okay.
And by that, I mean that different groups come in to do plays, performances, throw parties.
Okay.
Other than that, there's no difference. If you may have seen a bus from Arch Care going in and out, we, we traded off our adult daycare program, which was in our concourse level. We no longer operate that. We traded it off with Arch Care, but their adult daycare program, which is missing them space, so it's the same amount of employees, and their bus goes in and out with clients.
What does that mean, that you traded it out and they leased it?
Oh, that we don't run, we don't run the program. They're running the program, that's all.
Okay.
There's, there's no difference. So, if, if your question was because you're seeing an Arch Care bus, other than that, no. I mean, you know, groups come in and groups go. As a matter of fact, we've been very restricted about having people come for seminars, you know, for workshops, because we don't have parking for them except on weekends.
Okay. Okay. So, what I'd like to do is just adjourn this to watch twenty-fourth, our meeting, and by then, that should give us enough time to have our consultants look at it, okay?
And we'll have our traffic control pre-shot directly to...
Right.
...those traffic...
Okay, great. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I...
It's not engineering, I'm sorry?
No.
No, I'm, I'm actually, are, are you discussing sending this back to your current engineer? Are you looking for an actual traffic?
We're gonna send it to an actual traffic person.
Okay. So, I'm not sure that they've been appointed yet, so we'll keep you in the loop.
And just so...
So, contact Lori Lee.
Oh.
And procedurally, our, I believe the board has declared itself leading...
Oh, you're right.
That's uncertain, I haven't done that yet.
We will do that.
Sorry to jump again.
No, it's okay. We should have done that a while ago, but you're right, we will do that.
How's, how's it going? Sorry.
No.
Oh, we did it very differently.
Yeah. So, I'm just going to leave this open, right?
If you've announced a date certain, then that's fine.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will say the three D was helpful, so appreciate it, thank you, regardless of if you attended the site visit or not.
And if anybody else...
Yeah.
If anyone else doesn't want to come to the site, please let us know, so we can make it available. I think Ralph still has it marked out.
It should be.
He's still with it marked up for...
Okay.
And Ralph, that stormwater management design that you showed on the screen, is that in your materials?
Yes.
Is it attachment to your stormwater management report?
Yeah, it's, it's in, it's on the design drawing, the stormwater management plan, there's details in the plan.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we have all the documents.
All that is in the information.
Thank you.
Are you able to send us that presentation that you just shared with us?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Are you able to share that presentation that you just showed us?
The, the three D?
Yeah.
I believe so, I'll just have to figure out a way to get to you.
That'd be great, that'd be great if you can do that, thank you.
And we'll also submit the, I guess it's the diagram that we presented that shows the different P times, so that's also part of the record, but I'll make sure you have that included.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, we're moving now to the courtesy of the floor. I'd appreciate it if you kept your comments to three minutes, and who will be first? Come on up. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Hi, my name is Julie Fisher, and I live at twenty-two Hilldale Road. I recently learned about a bill introduced by Senate Majority Leader Andrew Stewart-Cousins to authorize the village of Dobbs Ferry to reduce the speed limit to twenty miles per hour on village roads. I'm here this evening, among other community members, to request that our village officials strongly support these efforts. My husband and I moved to Dobbs Ferry seventeen years ago. Coming from the city, a significant factor in choosing the location of our home was the accessibility for walking to and from the downtown area and our schools. Many fellow residents have decided to move to Dobbs Ferry, their home, based on the attraction to a walkable, likable community. I never imagined that walking, even in clearly marked crosswalks, would start to seem more dangerous than driving around our small village. It hadn't occurred to me that one day my sixteen-year-old daughter would become a witness to a deadly hit to run while walking to a party with friends after a football game. Sadly, the accident my daughter witnessed involving the late Mr. DiPaolo was the third pedestrian fatality our community has experienced since two thousand and fourteen. In two thousand and nineteen alone, there were at least thirteen fatal pedestrian crashes across the Lower Hudson Valley. Now, there's no doubt that distracted driving has played a large role in these accidents, especially considering the significant increase of fatal pedestrian crashes in the U.S. since two thousand and nine, when cell phones really first became commonplace. More large SUVs on the road also play a role. That being said, a real factor that determines if someone lives or dies in a pedestrian-related crash is not necessarily the cause of the accident, but rather the speed at which the car is driving. Studies have shown that a pedestrian hit by a vehicle driving at forty miles per hour will have an eighty percent likelihood of being killed in the accident. That's eight people out of ten dying after being hit at forty miles per hour. At thirty miles per hour, this improves slightly, with four pedestrian crashes out of ten resulting in a fatality. The best odds by far are when a car is traveling at twenty miles per hour. At this speed, the fatality risk drops dramatically to only ten percent, or one person out of ten losing their life. So, whether the accident is caused by a distracted driver, a distracted pedestrian, a poorly-lit intersection, or any other circumstance, the speed of the car will most often dictate the severity of the injury. In our village, we could save lives by implementing and enforcing twenty mile per hour zones at high pedestrian traffic areas, such as the middle school, high school zone of Broadway, Maple, Belton, and Washington, around Springhurst, near Walroo and Bellwood, at Clinton Avenue, as well as other additional streets that have no sidewalks and heavy pedestrian traffic. While I can only speak for myself, of course, I do want to point out we do have others here in attendance who are also in support of this legislation. Thank you for your continued efforts to make the streets of Dobbs Ferry safer for all and for your consideration of the support of this bill.
Thank you. Can you give that to Liz? Liz? Yeah, is it okay?
Yeah. And this is, this is just a study that I, I could use, so, yeah, would you like to give us? Yes, I'm fine. Thank you.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Rebecca Pitts. I live at one twenty-one Walroo Ave. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
I'm here today to ask you to pass local legislation to make New York State Senate Bill six eight one one a reality, so we can make our streets safer for all Dobbs Ferry residents, with our most vulnerable in mind, and that's children, the elderly, and people with disabilities. At least half of you here today rallied with our kids, so thank you all for that, and I'm truly grateful for your demonstrated commitment to such an important issue. And I also want to thank Rob Baron, who isn't here, but he spoke at the rally, and he has some really inspiring words for our kids, and to Liz, safer for all of your health of logistics, and a few other people who aren't here, Dr. Brady from the Board of Ed, and Chief Wavara, and Officer Camkey, who were also so helpful with organizing the children's walk to slow the cars, the impetus for this legislation. As you likely know, motor vehicles remain a leading cause of preventable death in the United States, killing over thirty-five thousand people a year. Pedestrian fatalities are on the rise nationally and are at their highest level in three decades. Here in Dobbs Ferry, twenty-three known pedestrian injuries occurred in the five-year period from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and seventeen, and five students were involved in pedestrian or cycling crashes in the two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen school year alone. And as recently as September, as, excuse me, as recently as September of two thousand and nineteen, we lost Mr. DiPaolo to traffic violence. In our neighboring villages of Irvington and Hastings, the speed limits on streets near schools are fifteen miles per hour. So, our neighboring villages, they've made this commitment, and we can too. It's very simple, as Julie just said, the chance of survival from a crash is drastically lower when speeds exceed twenty miles per hour. We also have wide local support for this bill, and it was notably initiated by the State Senate Majority Leader herself. We also have support for this bill from the Traffic Committee, so thank you, Donna, the PTSA Executive Committee, the PTSA Safe Streets Committee, thanks to Teresa and F.B., neighborhood groups on Walroo and Bellwood, the Maple, Belton, Washington Neighborhood, and Clinton Avenue residents. It's worth saying, too, that as of today, these are just signs. Beyond the simple step we are taking today, hopefully, there are four to five really glaring death traps in Dobbs Ferry right now. These include all of the crosswalks on Broadway without a dedicated stoplight, and the crosswalk at Ashford and Storm. It's been proven that the best way to slow down cars is to do two things, and that's number one, to redefine our mission around transportation in Dobbs Ferry, and that's to prioritize human life over moving cars quickly from one point to another. And number two, to design our roadways for lower speeds with this mission in mind. And this includes raising crosswalks, narrowing roads, removing lanes, shortening crosswalks, and creating buffers like street gardens or street trees between sidewalks and roadways. And I'm so happy to share resources with all of you. I know, Vinny, you have one of my...
I do have your book, which I do have to return to you, but...
No worries, you can keep this, I'm reading it. And in the meantime, thank you so much for passing legislation to make New York State Senate Bill a reality, or six eight one one, a reality. None of us want to be standing here one day having the same conversation because a child died, a preventable death on our streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just say, what we're planning on doing is having a work session to address this issue, so I don't know what date we will plan this to be for, but we do want to have set aside some time just to address this bill and the issues that it arise, that it raises. So, it's a very important matter, it's a very important issue, and we want to give it the time that it deserves. So, we will put that out, so please be sure to look for future agendas so that you can attend the public workshop session on this, and we can discuss it. Be that as it may, I know you have something else, so go ahead.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lauren De Vilvis, and I live at ninety-seven Walroo. So, thank you so much for giving the citizens of our village a chance to speak about the issue of slowing the cars in Dobbs Ferry. On October twenty-sixth, at the Slow the Cars Rally, our children told us, "A citizen can beat a kid." And these six words are the reason we are all here tonight. Without knowing it, from their activism on that day, Dobbs Ferry children shaped and inspired the legislation submitted by our Senate Majority Leader, Andrew Stewart-Cousins, for the New York State Senate Bill S zero six eight one one. Our children showed us that they know the answer to what can a citizen do. The important legislation gives a village the authorization to reduce the speed limit to twenty miles per hour on village roads. In the fall of two thousand and eighteen, a Safe Streets Committee member asked me if I wanted a lawn sign for slowing the cars. Of course, I said, "Give me two." She dropped a lot of Becky Souths, and when I saw it, I was stunned. "Don't be the fourth car to hit a kid this year." And I just, I have a photo of it right here, in case anyone missed that one. That was a good one. And I didn't even know there were three. So, that was the ad campaign created by the former Safe Streets Committee members of Rob Baron, Corinne Arina, and Matt Rosenberg, and I was stunned, "Don't be the fourth." Well, it was pretty dark, but I decided I'd put it up in front of my house and my backyard because I live on the way to Springhurst, which is a lot of speeding there. During the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year, five children were hit by cars in Dobbs Ferry. Five. One man was fatally killed in September. I think it's safe to say that we have a problem in Dobbs Ferry, and I think everyone's kind of agreed, like, could we just raise our hands? Do we agree? You know, there's a problem. Okay, thank you. Yeah. I do know there is one. So, as an elementary school teacher and a librarian, a lot of times I ask my students, "What do we do with a problem? How can we work together to solve it?" And as a librarian, I say that you can almost always find the answer in a book. So, in two thousand and sixteen, a book came out that was so inspiring, I actually read it to all six hundred of my students. So, I'm going to ask you to just pretend you're a grade school for about two minutes and see if this book can help us solve this problem tonight. And it's called, "What Do You Do With Problems?" I'll read it fast.
Very fast.
I don't know how it happened, but one day, I had a problem. I didn't really want it, I didn't ask for it, I really didn't like having a problem, but it was there. This little boy has a teeny little problem. Why isn't it here? What is it want? "What do you do with a problem?" I thought, I wanted to make it go away. I shoot it, I scowl at it, I tried ignoring it, but nothing worked. I started to worry about my problem. What if it swallows me up? It's getting bigger. What if my problem sneaks up and gets me? What if it takes away all of my things? I worried a lot. I worried about what would happen, I worried about what could happen, I worried about this, and I worried about that, and the more I worried, the bigger my problem became. I wished it would just disappear. I tried everything I could to hide from it. I've even found ways to disguise myself, but it's still found me, and now it's huge. And the more I avoided my problem, the more I saw it everywhere, I thought about it all the time, I didn't feel good at all. I couldn't take it anymore. "This has to stop," I declared. Maybe I was making my problem bigger and scarier than it actually was. After all, my head, my problem didn't really swallow me up or attack me. I realized I had to face it. So, here he is getting ready to face the problem. So, even though I didn't want to, even though I was really afraid, I got ready and I tackled my problem. And when I got face to face with it, I discovered something. My problem wasn't what I thought it was. I discovered it had something beautiful inside. My problem held an opportunity. It was an opportunity for me to learn and grow, to be brave, and to do something. So, now he's feeling a little differently about the situation. All right, some new books, pages are sticking up. It showed me that it was important to look closely because some opportunities only come once. So, now I see problems differently. I'm not afraid of them anymore because I know their secrets. Every problem has an opportunity for something good, you just have to look for it and end. And this copy's for you guys.
Well, that's a first, I have to say that we've never been ready to stand on the floor, so thank you.
So, Dobbs Ferry, how do we turn our problem into an opportunity?
So, your time is up. Can you submit that?
I just have like one whole paragraph.
Okay, one paragraph.
Okay. Looking beyond this bill, it's imperative to speak openly and regularly about making our streets safer, starting with those with heavy traffic and roads where children are walking to school. And also, last week in the enterprise, the Hastings PTSA Traffic Safety Committee, Marisa Gonzalez-Silverstein endorsed the candidate, Georgia Lindhal, who was seen because of the progress made in Hastings around traffic in their schools. She said for the past two years, they've been meeting monthly with Ms. Lindhal, as well as official officers from the school district, to make sure that children get to and from school safe. So, I propose, you know, we do something like that here in Dobbs Ferry. And so, here's all my things, and then I also have some other little presents for you. Sorry, of the rally, and of all the stuff, all together. Really nice, right? Donna, here, you want this one? Okay. And then I'll give you guys the kids and the book and the article and...
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
First of all, we get gifts. Can't accept gifts.
Can't accept gifts? Well, we'll put, we'll put it in the, in Villa Hall.
Give it to the village.
We'll get to Villa Hall.
Not be a bitch.
Go ahead.
Thank you, it's hard to call on Lauren. My name is Graham Lucick, and I live at twenty-one Bellwood Avenue with my husband and two daughters.
Can you say your name again? I'm sorry.
Graham Lucick, twelve, twenty-one Bellwood Avenue, with my husband and two daughters. I have here a letter from Greenberg Town Supervisor Paul Finer, who couldn't be here tonight, but asked me to read this letter, so I'll read it and then submit to you. Dear Mr. Mayor and members of the board, I understand that your board is considering a resolution endorsing proposed state legislation introduced by New York State Senator Andrea Stewart-Cousins that would reduce speed limits on certain roads in Dobbs Ferry from twenty-five to twenty miles per hour. If this bill passes, the village will be able to reduce speed limits on roads with heavy pedestrian traffic and on roads near schools. I enthusiastically support this proposal. Pedestrian safety is an important concern. In the unincorporated section of Greenberg, we have recently experienced nine separate pedestrian safety accidents and four separate fatalities. These accidents occurred since August of last year. Last year, there was a fatality in Dobbs Ferry. A few years back, another fatality in Dobbs Ferry. There is an increase nationally in the number of pedestrian-related accidents. Greenberg and Dobbs Ferry are not alone. The proposed resolution will make our streets safer for pedestrians and children, and will send a strong message to motorists to be more careful. I look forward to working with the village and learning from your experiences. There is nothing more important than safety. One final thought, approving this proposal will also send an important message to the student activists who participated in and organized the rally last year, that their voice and opinion counts and that government listens. Today's students may become tomorrow's future governors, senators, local officials. The enactment of this law will highlight their effectiveness. Sincerely, Paul J. Finer, Town Supervisor.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, thank you for letting me speak for a quick moment. My name is Pam Rebus, and it's my first time here. I'm at one ninety-three Clinton Avenue. So I'm just going to cut to the chase. I'm sure no one is against this bill, gives the freedom to our town to make the decision about what we think is right for our streets. So I don't think there's a problem with us passing this, and I think it's going to get enacted. I'm going to the next step, where you actually make those decisions about which roads are important enough to think through more clearly. We had this traffic study done on Clinton Avenue a little over a year ago, and it was done at a time when the master school was in session, and it was done in a time which showed us that the speed limit on my road at twenty-five, the traffic that was on that road, which is out about eighty to ninety cars periodically, didn't speed enough, that they were not speeding fast enough to require any active measures beyond what was done recently, which was a flashing light and some gaps in the middle of the median. So my question here, my thought is to really encourage you to consider Clinton Avenue as one of those streets when this bill does get passed to, or sorry, if it does get enacted to allow us to really consider what else we can do for my road. I currently don't have lamp posts on my front lawn, which used to be there, because someone ran over it, and thankfully I didn't have a car in my driveway or children around, because it was taken across my yard and into the neighbors. We also have a fire hydrant that was removed because somebody ran into it, and it was replaced in another part of the street. So if cars are hitting fixtures, imagine what they're doing if there's children or others around. We have bus stops, we have children walking up and down, myself included. I just want to encourage you to consider Clinton Avenue, a very serious thoroughfare that requires the same attention as all the other, closer to public schools, not just the private schools. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jessica Fluger on eleven Overlook Road, and I also represent a large group of neighbors, in my case, around Price Street. We're also worried about the safety for pedestrians, for our children, and for ourselves in our neighborhood. For those of you who are not familiar, Price Street runs parallel to Ogden Avenue, and the nice thing about our neighborhood is we could walk places. We can walk to Springhurst, we can walk to the River Town Square, we can walk to stores on Ashford Avenue and to Pool Park, now with the new pool, but even adults don't feel safe walking on Price Street. So what are our concerns? Price Street has, over time, become one of the major throughfares, so drivers are using it to cut through our neighborhood. We see a lot of distracted driving, lots of speeding, and just in general, an increase of traffic. So why is that? We have observed two significant patterns. The one is that everyone and their brother wants to avoid Ashford Avenue. So in order to do that, many people going between downtown and the Art League Bridge use the favorite Deacon Hill, Price Street, Hickory Hill shortcut to come through our neighborhood. The other major group that's cutting via Price is going to and from the River Town Square development. Now, I know when River Town was built, everyone was worried that Ogden Avenue would become one of those major throughfares, but Ogden Avenue now has speed bumps, stop signs, a traffic line, a parking lane, and two very wide shoulders. So Ogden's not very attractive to cut through, but Price Street goes exactly in parallel, and it has none of those measures. We do not even have a sign that says twenty-four miles per hour. We have no sidewalk, it's just an open, wide, unobstructed street, and unfortunately, it's very ideal for speeding, and drivers take advantage of that. With no sidewalks, as everywhere, this is really dangerous for pedestrians, and it's also on the route of a school bus. So we've brought those concerns to the traffic committee in January, and we have been really grateful that they have been such an amazing resource on this mission for us. So we're thankful for their support and ongoing partnership. Also, since we brought this to the traffic committee, the police has increased their presence. They even put this mobile electronic speed sign up on Price Street for a week. So we were really appreciative of the fact that there was such a fast and immediate response to our concerns. Now, when it comes for a solution, we all know that sidewalks come with complexities. They cost money, they require homeowner approval. So while we would love to have sidewalks on our streets, we are aware kind of of the practical reality here, but we do believe there's many measures that we could take to significantly improve this pedestrian safety on Price Street. We want to continue to work with the traffic committee and then come back here to present our ideas for a solution. Tonight, we merely wanted to bring this other area and this other neighborhood to your attention, kind of in the theme that we're having here, and we're asking for your ideas and input as we go along the journey, for particular, this Chestnut neighborhood. It is in the vision plan for the Chestnut neighborhood to be better connected to other neighborhoods, so we're fully aligned with that. And then, of course, we ask for your support to make Chestnut Ridge safer for pedestrians.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Lee Gross, so the fifty building Avenue. And on January sixth, my daughter, I was picking up my daughter from middle school. She's thirteen years old, and we don't let her cross Broadway, you know, because it's not safe. She was on one side of the Broadway, on the school side, and I was on the other side with my dog, waiting for the traffic to stop. There is a sign that says that, you know, to allow pedestrians to cross, for cars to stop. Five cars went through. I finally stepped out a little bit into the street, and a car came and hit my dog. The dog was pinned under the wheels, I had to get the car to back up to bring my dog. My dog was on the other side witnessing this whole thing, and the dog is recuperating now. It wasn't fatal, I'm sorry. But the point is, people don't stop at these signs, and in a place as obvious as in front of the high school, I think that we need either flashing lights. The police came over, and they suggested that we put flashing lights there or have a button or something similar to on Clinton. But this is a real major problem here. People do not stop at crosswalks. And just coming over here tonight, I witnessed almost ten cars went by without stopping at the crosswalk.
Thank you.
I know that you all know this problem, but I just wanted to say it then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so you know, we all, as you know, Broadway is a state road, which comes with all sorts of complications and bureaucracy we have to jump to. We are in the process of trying to get those rapid flashing lights on certain crosswalks on Broadway, but it might take time, but we're all working on that.
Anybody else?
I just have to add that I'm glad that you're using the crossroads. I recently watched a report from Westchester County where the county's actually implementing a momentum to actually train pedestrians to use the crossroad. And there was actually an article that was recently shared as a report where a police officer via a camera was actually showcasing on Channel Twelve how pedestrians just cross right across from the crossroads, and they are not using the crossroads. And I really think that anything that we do should also include, and I think that I shared that with you when we had our conversation, is an education to a lot of our pedestrians to use the crossroads. I have witnessed people going across our gateway from to Ashford straight to the church, or from one gas station to the other, and it blows my mind, because I will never feel safe doing it. So it's just something that I think that we have to also take into consideration. That was, you stopped, that is not mine. But I, I'm glad that you say that you're using the crossroads, and yes, it is a serious concern that we have, because people don't stop, but I'm so glad that you're using it.
So it's a big issue, and we want to spend a lot of time on it, give it the seriousness that it deserves. So we will spend, we will put on a work session where we can talk about all the options and bringing all experts on this to discuss it. So I appreciate everybody coming in today. Look in the agendas for the future meetings, and thank you for coming in. Anybody else want to speak about anything else at all? Okay, so we can move on to our other meeting. You guys are all welcome to stay for that other stuff.
No, I feel like, no, no. Well, we've got kids' books we can read.
Come on, it's just about to get fun.
I'm sorry, I didn't give you this picture, but this is the one in Hastings, what they did. I took fifteen without.
Fifteen, okay, so that's what I like to see.
I think that's a school zone. The twin mile side in Hastings, there are some.
It's a school zone, but we don't even have that at Springhurst.
Yeah, there's a fifteen, there's just a fifteen mile by our side on, on Springhurst.
In, in the road to enter Springhurst, it is fifty miles an hour.
Yeah.
We're in a meeting, we should be having.
Right, so let's go.
So we hope that you joined us, and we are really happy to support this motion.
I definitely want to. Thank you so much for doing that. Here's this, in case it helps, any other problems might happen.
Okay. Okay, we can't, all right, we can't do this, we cannot do this, we cannot do this. Okay, okay, right, okay. Okay, let's move along.
Move along, my folks.
You can speak at the mic if you'd like.
You're more than welcome to speak at the mic if you want to make a statement, but it has to be on the record.
I want to go on to the mic. Yes.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to consider a motion to approve audits three, numbers three, number four, number five, for February twenty twenty, as recommended by the village treasurer. Is there a motion? Trustee Taylor, second, and trustee Nell, all in favor? That passes seven to zero. Consider a motion to appoint Ms. Allison Schultz as member of the traffic committee for a term of one year, as recommended by the nominating committee. Is there a motion? Trustee Nell, second, Deputy Mayor Casal, all in favor? That passes seven to zero. Consider a motion to accept Mr. Michael Novak as member of the Dobbs Ferry Volunteer Fire Department Livingston House Company, and to have his name placed onto the active insurance rolls, as recommended by the Dobbs Ferry Fire Department Board of Wardens. Is there a motion? Trustee Taylor, second, trustee Durazi, all in favor? That passes seven to zero. Consider a resolution in connection with the proposed amendment to the site plan for one fifteen Broadway, Cabrini, establishing the board as lead agency on the SECRE. Now, I don't know if we should have done this earlier, it really, doesn't really matter, I guess.
No, this is before you can reach a decision on the matter, and SECRE regulations suggest you do this as early as possible in the process, but it has been overlooked. So this is just housekeeping at this point. You're declaring yourselves as lead agency. You are the only approval authority, so there's no need to circulate and notice intent. There's no, you're the only approval authority, so there really isn't another option. So you'll declare yourselves as lead agency, as was suggested by the consultant's attorney, the consulting attorney.
Is there a motion for this? Jeopardy Mayor Casal, second, trustee Taylor, all in favor? That passes seven to zero. Referral from the building official for the board to set a public hearing for final review of one hundred Main Street addition renovation on March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. Do I have to have a motion for this, or am I just setting a date?
Well, you do need to set a date, and you can only do that by official action.
Okay, so is there a motion to set a public hearing for the review of one hundred Main Street?
Wait, we have this.
It's going to be two, yes.
This and then a Cedar. And this.
And Cabrini.
This and Cabrini.
This and Cabrini.
No, I'm not saying this.
I'm saying Cabrini, Cedar, and.
Is Cedar going to be on March twenty?
We did move them. We cannot. They're on the first. Those three.
They're on March tenth.
You're on March, they're on March.
They're on March tenth.
Yeah, with the, with the local law.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure it's going to continue.
I guess.
Well, I don't think you can put it off any further.
Okay.
Just put it out.
Is there a motion? Trustee Patino, second, trustee Sullivan, all in favor? That passes seven to zero, and I'm going, we're going to set a public hearing date, not for March twenty-fourth. Set a public hearing date for establishment of the sewer fund law, and Shirley, could you talk about this, please?
Sure. There has, as you know, our sewers are aging quickly, and as I've been told and been looked at, it's great when the sewers are doing fine. It's not a sexy subject, but when the sewers are not doing fine, that's a problem. So we're looking in a budget program, like Jeff and I have talked a great deal about this, of a way of funding this without it being solely on the residential property. As you know, we have a sixty, forty percent split. Sixty percent of our residences are taxed, and forty percent are exempt from all taxes, except for the county tax for sewage treatment plan. This method of making a sewer fund would take it out of the general budget, place it into what is called an enterprise fund, so that we may track our costs, have the engineering fund out of that, because we need engineering study to see how bad the sewer issues are. It would be the ability to capital plan, we'd have capital plans for what we need after we do the engineering report. So the point is, is that these costs will be distributed over a hundred percent of the properties based on usage. Therefore, the resident, small, average household, at this point, because we're still playing with the numbers to see what's needed and what the usage is, will be around maybe a hundred and eight, a hundred and ten dollars a year. Those that have much more usage, whether it's exempt or non-exempt, will pay more, thus really lessening the burden on the people who pay the property taxes at this point. It's not a property tax issue, it is a usage issue. It is, the sewers are used by everyone, and we are allowed by, by law to set up this fund. Hastings and Oarsley are in the same position, and they've decided the same thing. We may do it at different levels. I know Oarsley is doing it in tandem with us. In fact, they are, they already passed, they already set the public hearing. This has been an issue with the board. The board has tried to relieve the pressure from homeowners, and yet, keep the quality of life, and sewers are a quality of life, even though you don't see them, in a good, working manner. So we ask that you set the public hearing for this sewer fund for March tenth. We will have much more information by that time, and I think it would be a benefit for the village to share the responsibility of an aging system, basically.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. It is something new and different, but it's important, so.
There's a resolution in the packet, yeah, setting March tenth as the, as the night to discuss the local law that will establish the sewer fund and sewer fee program. discuss the local law that will establish the sewer fund and sewer fee program.
Okay, so is there a motion to set a public hearing date for the establishment of a sewer fund law? That's trustee Taylor, second, trustee Nell, all in favor? And that passes. Okay, the minutes, does anybody have any questions or comments about the minutes?
Yes, there's a typo on page 15, it's missing an E in there. And I was present for the end of the meeting, so I think I was part of the motion.
Okay.
And I'm sure I voted to approve the conclusion of the meeting.
So is there a motion to accept the minutes as amended by trustee Sullivan? Trustee Casal, checking by trustee Sullivan, all in favor? So that tops the minutes. Reports and announcements, do you have any reports or announcements, trustee Derazi?
Just want to share with the community that the DPW, I call it the DPW because that has become my adjacent to the beautification committee. We are ready to start our planning for the planting for the spring, so we welcome anyone that would like to volunteer. We are really welcoming people, so please, following Christine Nell's, Christine Nell that is going to speak about the nominating committee, if anybody's interested in volunteering and assisting us on this 2020 spring spread for the beautification of the village, please come on board and join us. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Patino, do you have anything?
Not tonight.
Trustee Sullivan?
No, I think you'll have all the library updates as you seem to every week.
I do not have any.
Oh, I did notice that the library is doing a screening of Parasite, but I don't recall when. So I suggest you go, everyone go to the.
Well, that's an excellent movie, so.
Yes, I think it's a screening on, I want to say, well, come back to me, I'll tell you when it is.
Okay, I'll come back to you. Trustee Nell?
Nothing.
Well, that's difficult.
Trustee Taylor?
I just want to say quickly that the meetings on the passive heating, the heat smart that the sustainability task force did, at least the one I attended in the library, standing room only, it's still possible to get involved. It's a great thing to think about, a way to save energy, save money. It doesn't work everywhere, but it's a great possibility that people should take advantage of.
That was well attended. Deputy Mayor Casal?
Yeah, the CAB, just like now, is working on finalizing a new open space inventory, which they'll be submitting once the board approves it to the, to Westchester County. And the affordable housing task force is working on a presentation for the board regarding the affordable house, the Westchester County needs assessment and on what the affordable housing committee is doing. I think there was another, oh yes, CAB, again, big one, is in the process of working with Mercy College and who has offered one of their programs. They will be coordinating water testing, water quality testing for Wickers Creek. So that'll be happening in the spring, so keep our fingers crossed that we'll all go through because that would be a great thing for the village and for our friends of the Wickers Creek.
Yes, we're appreciative of that.
I have a few. On Tuesday, April 7th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., Westchester County Clerk Tim Idony's mobile office will be at Village Hall, parked on Main Street in front of the police department. The AARP income tax aid will be happening Mondays, I guess starting now, Mondays through April 13th, at the library from 12:30 to 4:30. That's every Monday. And Rivertown Pollinator Forum, learn about five local pollinator projects and how you can support pollinators in your own garden. That's February 27th, that's Thursday at 7:30 at South Presbyterian Church. And the Dobbs Ferry Recreation Department is hiring for the summer and they're looking for all types of people to work as lifeguards, day camp counselors, CITs, WSIs. What's a WSIs?
Water safety instructor.
Okay.
They can teach the swim lessons at camp and stuff.
Okay, so some of these jobs are for kids 14, young as 14. So if you're interested, go to the Dobbs Ferry Recreation website and, or you can call 914-693-0024 for an application, so. I guess that's it. We are going to adjourn to.
Oh, I just wanted to say one, I don't, I couldn't find that, but.
That's what I.
DobbsFerryLibrary.org is good, but I did want to comment that Vinnie and I had attended the memorial that the library did for Cheryl Matthews.
So did Maura, Maura was there.
Sorry, and Maura, I apologize. Sorry. You came in later than us, though. But you were there for the start, so it's okay. But anyway, it was really well done. I didn't realize that she literally had never had any other job and had been there for 43 years, so since she was.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven. I shouldn't be doing this announcement, but you all should. But it was so well done. I mean, I cried during it. Her family was very prophetic. The slideshow, the library did a fantastic job honoring somebody who had been a treasure to the village and many students currently, parents, grandparents who also had her as their librarian. So it was a, it's videotaped and it's been posted on Facebook and somewhere else, and so if anyone's interested, it was, it was really nice.
I'm so glad that you mentioned that because I have to really give kudos to everyone that was involved. It was such a beautiful memorial to her life and it was just very well done and they did a fantastic job.
It was very moving. It shows to show you how one person could affect so many other people, so. Okay, on that note, I will adjourn.
You can take a motion to adjourn.
I have to take a motion to adjourn the meeting. Trustee Taylor, second, trustee Sullivan, all in favor? Meeting is adjourned.